Alderman Roy Wesley. Alderman Sorantino.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley. Alderman Catalano. Alderman Sizmarski. Alderman Messino.
Yes.
Alderman Wood.
Here. We have a quorum. Next is approval of the meeting minutes from regular meeting, August 10th, 2017. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Next, report and recommendation, approval of UDO text amendment. Kelly? Or you take, or is that Kelly?
I'll take this one. Thank you. So, this is a case that went before the CDC. It is text amendments to the UDO. The first one is regarding the maximum height for industrial buildings. The council recently has approved three height variations for type 14 buildings. And so, we're bringing forward a text amendment to streamline the approval process where we're increasing, recommending increasing the height from 30 feet to 45 feet. The properties that would be affected, it's only applicable to type 14 buildings, which is larger lots, which would be two acres in size or greater. It is the I-1 and I-2 district, and approximately 100 properties would benefit from this text amendment. Additionally, and the reason why we're bringing this together as a package is because when we increase the height, it actually eliminates the trigger requirement for compliance with the Thorndale Corporate Corridor overlay. So, I'm going to just kind of take you really quickly through. 2009, the master plan was adopted, trying to take advantage of the Elgin-O'Hare expansion, which you see outlined here. The corporate Main Street then is in yellow, and then the business park is blue. The green is the recreation area. So, then that was codified in terms of a zoning regulation, but it was an overlay, and that currently is encouraged but not required. So, in 2013, Elgin-O'Hare had a groundbreaking. The construction up to Route 83, as we know, is to be completed by the end of this year, and later this month, their tollway is actually having their grand opening and event. So, as we can see, there was a lot of changes that are required in order to make this happen, which again is why the overlay was set and put in place. 2015, the TIF district was established. As you can see, the Thorndale Corridor master plan here in the orange is of a different size than the TIF district. The TIF district encompasses more, and then the corporate overlay is actually smaller than that. So, it affects fewer properties. And here is actually just another view of that to indicate the smaller size. The proposed text amendments to the overlay district would require compliance in order to move forward and progress that plan. It would be applicable for any change of use and then property improvements. It does exclude routine maintenance and repairs and installation of signage. It does, you know, one of the other changes that we made was terminology, just replacing references to Elgin-O'Hare Expressway with the Illinois Route 390, which is what it is. This actually will help facilitate the redevelopment to achieve those goals in the Thorndale Corridor master plan. The reason why the non-conforming provisions are coupled with this package is because the implementation or the requirement to comply with the overlay regulations would likely create some non-conformities, and as such, we wanted to make sure that we reviewed those provisions to see what impact it may have. In terms of the existing regulations, and I should also note that the non-conforming provisions apply to all properties within the city. It is not specific to the Thorndale Corridor. But currently, the...
Alderman Roy Wesley.
The non-conforming you said is citywide?
That is correct.
So, could you list the properties that are non-conforming throughout the city? You just listed the one on the TIF area or the Thorndale Corridor.
Ms. Kelly?
So, we actually do not have a complete listing of the non-conformities. We are working on developing that list, but we have not, we did not have all the tools necessary, but with the commercial occupancy program, we are now able to identify those non-conforming uses.
So, we're going to vote on something tonight when we don't have all the properties listed?
Ms. Kelly?
This is really the treatment of non-conforming properties. It does not look at them on a specific basis. It's actually the overall, how we treat non-conformities.
So, within the next 10 years, all these properties have to be, if they're non-conforming, they have to be in compliance? Is that what that means?
Kelly?
According to our existing regulations, yes.
Existing. But this one gives a 10 years. Correct?
Kelly?
The current regulations, as they stand today, has a bit like an amortization period where by 2020, those non-conforming uses will need to be eliminated according to the current code.
Let me rephrase this. So, a building is non-conforming today. How long do they get with this new UDO?
Kelly?
May I continue my presentation?
Let, let's let it, right. So, let's let her go through. We'll come back to the question. Not to avoid your question, we'll just, it sounds like she'll fill in some information.
Right. So, essentially, these are the existing regulations as it stands today. And for an example, if there is a six flat on Irving Park Road, for example, where there's commercial zoning, according to our existing regulations, they would have until 2020 before they would have to eliminate that use. And so, under the proposed regulations, we are actually looking for allowing gradual elimination of the non-conformities and prevent the undue burden on property owners where they cannot bring the structure or use into compliance due to other limitations. So, we've built in some additional flexibility because we understand the sensitivity of non-conforming uses and structures. As part of that, we've actually gone through and tried to better define what non-conforming uses, lots and structures are. We've reorganized the regulations, so it makes a little more sense, clarified how a non-conformity is determined, and then there's also a listing of the types of proof that's required in order to prove that it was legally established. Because this is related, when we're talking about non-conformities, we're talking about a property that, you know, if it's a structure, it was built at a time when it was allowed to be constructed, and then due to changes in regulation, it became illegal, or excuse me, not illegal, non-conforming over time because of subsequent regulations. This does not apply to illegal uses. It simply is, non-conforming means that it was legally established and then became non-conforming. The other thing that we're proposing...
Can we, Alderman Messina, ask a question?
I apologize.
This might answer Alderman Roy Wesley's question. So, that 2020 year, is that because that the existing ordinance was put into place in 2010?
That is correct.
That's missing. Okay. Okay. So, that's where that 10 years, 10, 2020. Gotcha. Okay.
Right. And so, what we're proposing is actually the gradual elimination just by, if it's abandoned, which is if it's, if it's, if the use ceases to exist for 12 months. So, say, for example, there was, you know, a hair salon that wasn't allowed to be in an industrial area, I'm making this up, by the way, but if a hair salon moved out and they didn't, another hair salon didn't move back in, then that would be, within 12 months, it would be considered abandoned, and you wouldn't be able to reestablish that use. It would be eliminated at that point.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Oh, sorry.
You got to my point that I asked. My next question is, maybe I have to wait until the presentation's over, but I'm going to forget what I'm going to ask.
Get it out.
Does it go back, if the property is non-conforming today, say it is today, does it go, if the property is sold, then it goes, then it goes back to the original use that it's supposed to be?
Kelly?
It actually doesn't matter the ownership. It matters the use. That's the driving factor. So, if, for example, somebody sells a building and they change the use, then for the 12 months, then it's considered abandoned. However, if, for example, we have a business and the business is sold, so a new owner comes in, that non-conforming use remains regardless of the owner of that use. Does that answer your question?
Kelly?
But, go back to your last slide. Number one, elimination of non-conforming. Aren't you defeating your purpose of, if the property is sold, you want to bring that in compliance?
Kelly?
If the same use remains there, then we're not, we're not, we certainly could build it in. The way that we've done it now is it's based on the use, not necessarily the ownership. But if the council wants to consider adding a provision where a change of use then triggers, you know, compliance, we can certainly look at building that in. But that's not how we've structured the amendment.
Okay.
The other thing that we have proposed is to consolidate adjoining lots that are under common ownership. So, you know, sometimes we'll have really small, for example, residential lots, and if you have two lots that you own, then you would have to consolidate those lots to then meet the minimum lot standards to, again, get rid of those non-conforming lots. The other thing that we looked at was a way to try and get, provide some flexibility for unique circumstances. And so, we wanted to make sure that there was some flexibility where the uses or the, you know, property somehow supported the comprehensive pit plan but have little to no impact on the adjacent properties and public health, safety, and welfare. So, what we proposed is administrative exception to allow expansion of non-conforming use, a non-conforming structure, or re-establishment of an abandoned use, but there are criteria that would have to be met. And then there, there would have to basically be an analysis of how those criteria are met before then it could be approved. And again, we're removing the requirement to eliminate the non-conformities within 10 years.
Alderman Messina?
Can you define administrative exemption?
So, it would grant authority for the development administrator or community development department to, basically, almost like a permit review, right? So, checking for code compliance. This would be checking for, meeting the criteria. And that is actually, those criteria are listed in the proposed amendments. It is, and each one is a little bit different, whether you're looking at expanding a non-conforming use or a non-conforming structure or even an abandoned use. So, I mean, I can certainly talk more about...
I just want to, just want to understand the process. Would you guys then have the final say on that, in that situation?
According to the way that it's being proposed, yes.
Okay. Not a fan, no, not a fan.
Right. But I'll interject, and then I'll give Alderman Wesley. But there is recourse to override the building department. So, they could come up with a finding, but there is recourse to, Alderman Roy Wesley.
End with this. Why can't we put in there for, if they don't agree with the building department, they could appeal to someone else?
That's, Ms. Kelly?
We do have an appeal process, and so, appeals of the decision of the development administrator or the community development department go to the Community Development Commission according to our Unified Development Ordinance. So, there is a process in place in the event that somebody disagrees or wants to appeal the decision.
I didn't make it clear enough. That's, so that's already part of our code and ordinance.
In return of that, I don't think we ever had a hearing. Who is on that hearing? Board?
Ms. Kelly?
I apologize. I don't understand the question.
He thinks you, he...
Mr. Murmas?
I think Alderman Wesley thinks you're talking about the Building Code of Appeals, not the CDC.
Isn't the same thing?
No.
No.
Okay. Could it go to the Boards of Appeal?
The CDC is actually more formal and probably better and easier because then that would also then go to the council. So, you probably want it to go to the CDC, which is how it's set up. Because then it would ultimately come to the council.
Kelly?
If I could offer further clarification, the Building Board Code of Appeal, or the Building Code Board of Appeals is specific to the Building Code, and they actually don't have the authority to waive code requirements. Their specific purview is the Building Code. So, it's ICC-related inquiries.
Who is that board? Does anyone know?
I...
I've never heard of it. Actually, never heard of it.
Neary, Neary is one of the guys on it, Mr. Neary. And I think there's, I think it's a three-person board.
They don't meet very often.
Right. They've never met that I know of while I've been on for six years. Alderman Messina?
I mean, what's their qual, I mean, is it an appointed board by the mayor? Is it, what's the qualification?
It's an appointed board by the mayor.
Well, I think we're getting off track when we're talking about the Building Code of Appeals because that's not related to this, what you guys want.
Change that you guys have up there, and I, I know, I have a problem with one person or two people having a decision on anybody. That's why there's eight of us up here.
That's why it goes to the CDC. It doesn't go to...
It's a committee, but yes.
And then it goes to you. So, you have the ultimate ability.
I just feel like there's extra layers we're proposing that don't need to happen.
Well, let me...
They're part of the process here. If they're going to bring something to the council, they're going to be part of the conversation. I don't need them to do something, one way or another, then we get complaints, or the mayor does, anybody does, and then it's just three-layered, three, I feel like we're adding processes that don't need to be there.
Let me, well, I'll interject. So, right now, there isn't a process. So, right now, you're done. So, this...
You just said they go to that appeals board.
Right. But no, only because we're voting to change it. If we left it alone, you don't have a word. You don't have a say. You can't take it anywhere.
Today, you just said that today they have an appeals board with Mr. Neary and...
No, no, no. Today, the CDC, the, let's go backwards. So, if something happens here to override them, you can take it to the CDC.
Right. So, there is a process?
There is a process.
Today. Okay.
Right. In place. All we're doing, all staff is trying to do, establish this ordinance, which strictly said that non-conformities had to end in 2020.
Right, right.
Creating a system whereby it isn't just a magic switch, you cut it and your property is no good anymore, to allow them a process and some latitude. If we don't like that, you can appeal to the CDC. So, I get what you're saying, but we have to have a process, and there has to have people that guide that process, and those are the people that...
Mr. Murmas?
I guess I misspoke. On the CDC review for these type of reviews and appeals, I guess CDC, the way the code's written, is the authority, the CDC. So, how normally CDC items go to the council, particular appeals like this, the CDC just decides, does not advance them to the council.
Okay. So, not an extra step. Okay.
Okay. Do you have some more?
I don't recall.
Sorry.
I guess I do. I have one more. So, the CDC did recommend approval of the amendments as presented. They found that it was consistent with the UDO, the intent and purpose, as well as with the comprehensive plan.
Okay. I need, I'll make a motion to approve if I have a...
I'll second that.
Second. Are there any other questions? Alderman Roy Wesley?
Kelly, have you presented this to the chamber at all and get their input basically on this or any of this stuff, like?
Ms. Kelly?
We do not present the text amendments to the chamber. It is published as required by law in the newspaper, but we did not go and request input from the chamber specifically.
Alderman Jacob?
Just for clarification, this all is for the Thorndale Corporate Corridor overlay, correct?
Kelly?
So, the height and the non-conforming provisions would apply, well, the height would apply to type 14 buildings only, which is out, it exists outside of the overlay district.
Okay.
And then the non-conforming provisions apply throughout the city to all non-conformities.
Is that residential too, or this is strictly commercial?
Kelly?
It does apply to residential. However, there is... Nope, that was the wrong note. But it does apply to residential as well.
Alderman Jacob?
So, right now, anybody that has a house that's not legal, non-conforming, in 2020, in 2020 would not be able to live there? Is that...
Mr. Murmas?
I think we're confusing ourselves. In summary, we're making this better for people that have non-conformities. So, it's better for businesses or better for people that are non-conformities. So, I think we're trying to trick ourselves here. It's friendlier.
But that's what we're trying to avoid. Because as written as it is, it sundowns 2020, and there's nothing anybody can do. And that's why we're making, being proactive and making the changes. Alderman Messina?
So, maybe, 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 can you just step back then? Because clearly, the three of us, at least the three of us, are just very confused. What's changing then? That if it is 2020 today, which I've never heard of anybody, as it is today, being worried about getting kicked out of their house in two more years, so this is news to me, can you be very crisp, clear, succinct? What do you propose?
I love that word.
Yes, please. I need to take my own advice, but could you please, could you explain how that changes, just that point?
Yes. So, existing non-conformities, according to our proposed amendments, would be allowed to continue in perpetuity as long as they continue their use, right? So...
Same use.
Same use, regardless of ownership. If the use continues in that location, they would be allowed to continue indefinitely. If for some reason there is a change and, say, the use is abandoned, it could potentially, under our amendments, be allowed to be reestablished, provided that it met certain criteria. Again, going back to making sure that it supports the goals and the comprehensive plan is sort of being the basis for that, but also that there's minimal or no impact to the adjacent neighborhood in terms of traffic and safety and things like that.
Go ahead. Alderman Messina?
Kind of going off the residential piece of it. The risk would be if it was abandoned for 12 months, the home, theoretically, we could reestablish it then.
According to our, yes, amendment. Yes.
Okay.
Okay. There's no further questions. We have a motion. We have a, Alderman Messina?
Just have a request for the motioner.
Sure.
Could you amend it to where we could at least see that list of properties that would be affected, or what you at least have, or do you guys have anything?
We are developing the list, but we are actually not, so the residential properties are not on, are not part of the commercial occupancy program. So, we're able to go through, and for those non-residential properties, we've started compiling a list. We're not even through the first year of that, so we don't have a complete listing of all of those non-residential properties that are non-conforming. But we also haven't gone through the residential piece of it either.
So, well, let me, for peace of mind, again, if we don't do nothing, they have no option. Residential, commercial, whatever it is, that sundowns at 20, we're trying to make it better to give us...
Why don't we just change the amendment to say, strike that, no 2020, and then call it a day? Why are we trying to put the added part of changing use? That's the part I'm confused. I mean, I get it, fine. Just strike that line out, forget 2020, call it a day. Why are we proposing? I'm worried about all this aggressive acquisition that we're going to have, especially on 83, selfishly, in our ward. These guys go, they leave, well, then someone comes in, boom, develop. I want to throw up a Walgreens there or something. Well, that doesn't put us in a good situation because those are on our map to eventually acquire.
Ms. Kelly?
Just because the city looks to annex property doesn't necessarily mean that they will be non-conforming. So...
High potential. Those properties on 83 are non-conforming.
Well, anytime you annex property, it's annexed in as R1, which is our most restrictive residential designation. And so, a rezoning has to occur as part of that in order to entertain any sort of development that is not residential. So, there are a number of steps that are in place that would allow the council to entertain or not entertain those types of proposals. But I'm not sure that the non-conforming provisions is going to address perhaps what your concern is relative to that.
I got one more question.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Kelly, we, you have two things here. Thorndale Corridor overlay and rise of non-conforming. You know, this thing was 65 pages? Could anyone tell me up here if they read 65 pages besides Art Woods, probably?
Go ahead.
Within the last four days?
What's that?
Has anyone read 65 pages of this ordinance within the last week besides Art Woods?
I'll answer as long as there's not a quiz. I did.
Okay. But there's a lot of, there's a lot of things here. Instead of having, like, you got two things here, couldn't you just break this down to two and do the revised non-conforming privilege separate and make it 30 pages instead of 65?
Sure. Alderman Messina?
As part of my recommendation at our meeting a few weeks back, I brought up the idea of microlearnings, and I thought a microlearning might be something that, not just you guys, anybody in staff could put together a short video that's three minutes long that says, you're about to read something that's very confusing. Here's a synopsis in video form, and we can just, not only read it, but maybe supplement it with like a quick, even YouTube video, or, I mean, I'm sure Nick knows how to create those recordings, but it might, like layman's terms, give us the executive summary or something. Just a thought. It was something that we talked about at that meeting, but...
Now, there's a quiz in it.
The Alderman Messina's concern, I was under the impression that the recommendation is what puts it into a click notes version of what 16 or 65 pages may or may not be.
Right. So, I think the big thing everybody has to remember is we're trying to fix it and make it better.
Better.
Right now, it's not good. That almost sounded...
Better's good, consistent. I just want to make sure it's consistent. I know it's the theme, so...
It is consistent, and now we have a week to read the pages that we didn't read or ask the questions.
Record of learning.
Or whatever. Kelly?
Well, and if I could just clarify, the reason why this one and text amendments typically have more content to them is because we actually do the redline version so that you can see what we're changing. And if there's a code section or an article that there's a lot of changes to because we reorganize it, then we provide an additional clean copy because that's easier to read oftentimes.
Jeff?
I would note that the reason why we put the redline version and the regular version, that was a specific council request to put both those versions in. So, that's why we do it that way. That was a specific council ask.
Okay. We have, any more questions?
One more thing.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
When a business comes in and sees 64 pages and says, okay, I gotta go through 64 pages and read all this, by the time they get to 52, they forget what page three said. So, what, there has to be a way to make this a lot easier, where we can make these codes or tax amendments or whatever, where we can make it four or five pages and put tabs or something and say, this section's for this, this section for this. True, the book might be bigger, but at least it's a section that I could go to and find that answer.
Kelly, do you want to answer that?
We will see what we can do to try and make it...
Kid-friendly.
Kid-friendly? Okay.
Easier, streamlined. We will look and see what we can do.
Are you, for clarity, are you, for the meeting or in general, are you saying that it should be...
In general, because if a person, the code book is thick already.
Right.
But again, there's some sections in there, 30 pages, 35 pages. They start reading through, Art Woods has nothing else to do but read the book.
That's what I do.
But my point is... But my point is, a person doesn't have, yeah, they want to develop, they gotta hire someone else to understand what the book says by the time they get to thirty-five.
Okay. Uh, I'll I'll respond to that, though. But so if you, if you take our code book, it does have tabs, it is tabbed, it is delineated by chapters and subchapters and that. So it is, if you had the whole book, it is easy to search for those people that are searching to do those things. Alderman, Peter Jacob.
So I I just want to make sure that voting yes for this, anybody that lives in a legal nonconforming home, as long as they continue to have it as a home, it it's not, nothing, they're not gonna, we can't change it on them, correct? Is that what you're?
Kelly.
That is correct.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Thank you. I just would like to remind everybody what our city manager so professionally said is that this is going to be, um, a means of protection for both businesses and residences. It's an an additional layer of protection that we currently do not have in place. So in my opinion, there should be no objection to this motion and or second.
Alderman Messina.
I guess I'll be so inclined to respond. I I would agree, it's very well intentioned, um, but I just, some of this stuff scares me, right? Some of the wording, so I agree, the intention is a hundred percent there, but if there's something that somebody doesn't agree with, I think we we need to, it needs to be brought up. So I appreciate your intent on this.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, roll call.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Epstein.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes, that passes. Uh, next items to be considered at future meetings, branding, October twenty-sixth, train station signage, November ninth, city hall electronic sign, November ninth, dumpster industrial code change, November ninth, chapter three code revisions, November ninth, Thorndale corridor rezoning, winter, twenty eighteen. Does anybody want to add anything? No, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, we're adjourned.
Who's, who's taking my, Roy, aren't you public?
Hello.
Sorry.
The new kid. I'll call the order of the Public Health Safety Judiciary and Ethics Committee. Uh, roll call will be the same as it has been. No need to call it again. I'd like a motion for the approval of minutes of our meeting that was held August tenth, two thousand and seventeen.
Make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? That passes then. All right, we're going to go to the chief for our report and recommendation.
Thank you, sir. Uh, two parts looking to add to our parking code. Uh, the first part deals with parking on basically unimproved surfaces or front lawns. There is a provision in the building code that talks about surfaces and whatever, but there's nothing really under the police code for us to just go out and write it under a typical parking ticket. It would have to be under a local ordinance citation under the building code. So we're just looking to, uh, put that as a, as an option for the police to write that as a parking citation as opposed to a local ordinance arrest citation. Uh, the second part is for vehicles. Uh, we've recently had this with some businesses, but it's happened before at residences where people park unregistered or expired, significantly expired registration out on the street. And unless we observe them driving, uh, you know, there's nothing we can really do about it. This would allow us to write a parking ticket for that violation. And then if a car is left there for several days without registration, obviously, it would fall under the red tagging and abandoned section, but that's a ten-day process, it's not a, uh, something that we can just do immediately, so.
Alderman Jacob, you have a question?
I just want to make a motion to approve the change.
Alderman Wesley.
Chief, um, so if a person has a boat in the driveway, the police, by you saying this, the police will have the right to write a ticket?
Yeah, and, you know, I I guess take along with that of, you know, we do use some discretion sometimes as far as, you know, if there's a question, we recently had a driveway that, you know, whether it was a driveway qualified as an improved surface, not so sure, we're gonna still refer those things to the building department. Uh, but we flat out sometimes have people that just pull two, three cars on a front lawn or put a car on a front lawn for sale. Uh, it would allow us to kind of address those in a quick manner rather than having to refer everything to the building department for follow-up.
So in return, if a, I'm using, I'm reading this and I'm understanding that you're not allowing a boat or a trailer on the driveway area, or just the grass area?
All right, chief.
It just would not be allowed to be parked, you know, in the grass area. Like I said, we we run into it a lot with things right flat out on the front lawn that people will sometimes park on. And obviously, not only, I I guess it could be a safety issue, but more, you know, it's an aesthetic issue too, and it's not an approved parking surface. So we could always write it under the building code. We don't really have anything under the police code that we can write it under. This just moves it over to the police code. It's a twenty-dollar initial ticket, um, you know, just probably, really just seeking compliance, and that usually does, will do the trick.
Have any more questions?
I think it's just like a parking ticket that they'd be able to protest if they, there's a problem?
Definitely. Uh, we have a parking ticket protest forum, because, you know, with parking tickets, a lot of times you don't have that personal encounter. Uh, it's an unattended vehicle, so that's why we have a protest process and those, uh, they fill it out. It goes to the issuing officer for their comments, the sergeant, and then it eventually comes to me.
There's no more questions, there's a motion on the floor by Alderman Jacob.
Second.
Okay, no need to repeat it. All in favor? Any questions?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Alderman.
Aye.
Aye, we're all aye. That passes. Items to be considered at future meetings. One item that I'm gonna bring up, well, three items I'm gonna bring up. Uh, one has to do with public safety. I'm sure you all, a couple of weeks ago, read that magnificent, uh, package that was put together by the intern in the police department. And I'm sure, unfortunately, we've come to the realization that we are not a crime-free city. And crime is here, it's being reported, and it's being activated on on a daily basis. With that in mind, I am going to strongly recommend, and this is brought up in future meetings, that our residential streets are uniformly and consistently lit without the need of residence signatures because they're afraid the light may go into their bedroom, which is a fallacy. I don't think they would live very comfortably if someone was robbed, raped, or mugged in front of their house that no one could see, not even them, from their bedroom window. So that is going to be something from a public safety standpoint that I'm gonna push. That's one of the things for future meetings. Uh, the second thing for the future meetings, um, is the abolishment of an an-hoc committee known as Wooddale Cares. That'll be considered at future meetings. And, uh, the third thing I will disregard because I've seen my answer. Alderman Jacob.
Just a question to Mr. Murmas. Wasn't the thing with the streetlights, wasn't that something already to be on the committee? I know we've kind of talked about lighting up the, having lights on all the streets.
I believe we talked about that as a strategic plan item. It might be in there, but that's something that we'd have to plan for capital funding-wise, but we would have to have that discussion first. So, yeah, I mean, it's been on the radar.
Well, I like to see it on the, I like to keep it on the radar, but I'd like to move it up to a priority spot on that radar. Any more questions? Motion to adjourn?
Make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. You're up, Roy. Who's Public Works?
I'll.
Who's Public Works?
They're, they're both absent, so, uh. Yeah. Uh, I'd like to call the Public Works Committee.
Yeah, go ahead.
He would, he's the, you're not the backup, correct?
Your vice chair?
Are you the vice chair?
The two backups are here.
Correct, so go ahead.
Right, so it goes to me, so.
Okay.
Thank you for playing.
Get the mayor's.
Sure.
Uh, I'd like to call the Public Works Committee to order, let the minute taker reflect that the same members are present. Now I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of September twenty eighth, twenty seventeen. Do I have a motion?
Make that motion.
Sir.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Next report and recommendation, approval of a purchase of a twenty eighteen full-size Ford Transit van in amount not to exceed thirty-six thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Mr. York.
Yes, sir.
Take it away.
Yes, um, we currently are in, um, currently have a two thousand and one Dodge van, seen in the slides right now. This van is in extremely bad shape, um, and needs to be replaced. Currently, it's being used as a backup mode of transportation. We try not to use it, um, very much at all.
Mr. York, can we, Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to ask a question here, please?
Budget item?
Yes, this is a budgeted item.
I make a motion to approve to buy a new vehicle not to exceed thirty-six thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars.
Sir.
Okay, any further question? Alderman Messina.
Just a random question, I guess. How do we allocate who drives these trucks?
This vehicle is utilized by the Utilities Division of Public Works. We do not allocate certain people to drive certain vehicles. They do not, um, own a vehicle. So, uh, this this vehicle itself will be used for, um, um, a role. So it's a, it's primarily going to be for duly locating. Um, it'll also be the, um, backup vehicle that'll be able to take the computer unit in it to do meter reading. And but that's, so basically, it's, we we utilize it more as functional vehicles versus people vehicles.
Go ahead, Alderman Messina.
Do we restrict if we have, like, a temp working with us or a seasonal person or any of that?
Mr. York.
No. If a full-timer, um, full-timers normally drive. Sometimes we have part-time people that need to, um, do a certain job function. And if that job requires them to drive a certain piece of a vehicle that they can legally drive, normally it's pickup trucks, then they're allowed to do so. We try our hardest not to have seasonal people driving, um, vehicles, but it happens sometimes, um, for them to to do that, so.
Alderman Jacob.
Question, Mr. York. Uh, originally, you had wanted a small dump truck, is what it says. I'm kind of curious how we went from a dump truck to a van, two totally different vehicles. I'm just kind of curious how that happened.
Mr. York.
Yes, um, originally, we had, we had thought that a small dump truck would be able to be utilized within this department or, excuse me, this division of Public Works. Kind of when we started figuring out what we actually needed, um, it kind of came to light very quickly that a dump truck, while it'd be nice and we would love to have it, um, really wasn't that practical. So we looked at a couple of different, uh, versions of that, um, to get it to a point that we could utilize it. But we kept kind of falling back on, this is the type of vehicle that we need. So instead of purchasing a vehicle that we don't really need, um, even though it'd be nice to have, we really went with more of a practical use, and, um, this is what we came up with.
Alderman Jacob.
Would it make more sense to get like a pickup truck that we could also use for plowing as well? I mean, I don't know if we have enough plow trucks, but like a pickup truck with maybe four doors where in the back they could keep their stuff and it can be used for snow plowing as well? Or do we have enough trucks for snow plowing?
Mr. York.
Um, currently, we have enough snowplow vehicles. Obviously, this would not be replacing a current snow fleet vehicle. When you get into pickup trucks and to be able to use it for duly locate, so for duly locates, you know, ninety percent of the product that is being utilized in there is spray paint and flags. So you want to have them in an area that's nice and closed and all that stuff. The the van really, um, and also to assist with, um, water meter reading and also as kind of the backup water meter van or water meter machine as well. You know, to be able to put equipment in there, brass meters that are expensive, you know, you don't, if you're gonna go out for two meters, you don't want to just have them sitting in the back of the pickup truck, so.
Mr. Sorrentino.
Well, thank you. Well, from a public safety and health perspective, uh, if you do not have in place, I would strongly urge you to have in place a motor vehicle record check on anyone who's gonna ever get behind the wheel of any city vehicle. Because if you don't know their history, you're giving them a weapon to get behind.
Mr. York.
Yes, um, currently, all of our seasonal employees have a background check performed by our police department and have since I've been here, so.
They include motor vehicle?
Yes.
Okay.
Alderman Messina.
Full timers, besides just your seasonal people, how about the rest of the employees?
Everybody has one upon employment. I don't know, I do not know how often that is is updated. We'd have to, I'd have to check with Steve. Chief Vesta has something to say.
Chief, would you like to?
I'm happy knowing that there's a, a process in place. Thank you.
There is a process that we, uh, we undergo through with H R, but through the Secretary of State, they have a proper process that you can submit a batch, and those are done on a yearly basis to check, uh, driver's license statuses of all the city employees that drive vehicles, so. And the the state allows that as a use as long as we do it through them and not just run it all separately down at the P D. It's a lead, it's approved lead to use.
My only other word would be nice. Good job.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Why yearly in that six months? We we just talked about DUIs here last week. I mean, if, hopefully, no one gets one, but it goes, by the time it goes through the system, it's over.
Sure.
Chief.
Uh, I guess I would just say part of it, I I'd have to look at what the this the Secretary of State's guidelines are as for how often we can do it. You know, e- even if you do it every six months, if someone got arrested today, they could be off suspension in 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 six months, too. You know, you would hope that by doing those regular checks, you're gonna, you're gonna catch the people that that are in violation or or have any major, major infractions.
Alderman Peter Jacob.
Just to make sure with the city manager, I mean, if they do that check and they find that somebody it shouldn't be driving, I would assume there's some disciplinary action for any employee that would be doing that.
Mr. Murmas.
Probably like a public execution. No, I'm just kidding. Yes, of course.
Alderman Roy Wesley, do you have a, any further questions?
A motion will be made in a second, it's made on the purchase.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, no further. No? Roll call.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes. That passes. Next items to be considered at future meetings, storm cost share, December fourteenth, disposal of old street signs, December fourteenth, Irving Park Road streetlights to be determined, forest preserve, land swap to be determined. Is there anything anybody would like to add? No, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.